The special meeting study session of the council for March fourth, twenty fifteen at four P M. City Clerk, can I have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Widmer?
Yep.
Councilmember Weest?
Here.
Councilmember Lampres?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis, Acting Mayor Lewis?
I'm present and the mayor-
Yeah, William's excused.
Is excused, okay. So if we had any members of the public, I'd invite them up to make any comments limited items on the agenda, but there are no members of the public present. So the first item, which is an action item, which is a little strange to me because I thought that we were only having study session discussion and no actions being taken at our study sessions, but we'll go forward this way. So Finance Director Aaron, would you like to present your?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. Before you is the staff report for review, for the council to review and authorize staff to respond to proposal for financial and accounting services for the South Bay, South Bay Side Waste Management Authority, which is known as SBWMA. SBWMA is a joint powers authority that operates East Shore Wave Environmental Center facility and they collect service fees for mixed management, for planning, solid waste reporting, recycling, material collections and so forth. And the area includes twelve members, as you see in the staff report. What is before you is SBWMA is currently requesting proposals for accounting services provided for their authority. Currently, the town of, City of San Carlos provides the accounting services contract for SBWMA and their contract agreement expires on June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. So SBWMA is seeking proposals from services from cities that would like to provide financial and accounting services for SBWMA. And within the request, the reason why we're bringing this today is, is proposals by March thirty first of this, this year, proposals must be into SBWMA. And so we're, we're seeking council's direction and for staff to allow us to write a proposal and submit a proposal to SBWMA for financial and accounting services. So the proposal should include a couple of items. One, it should clearly explain the town's understanding of the services requested. Second, it should be, a cost proposal should be included identifying the personnel that would be assigned to perform the services, the work. And three, a proposal provide investment advice as a separate line item within the cost proposal. So in, in part of that also SBWMA is requesting that we do a three-year proposal service agreement to be considered so that it, it can be a service, a professional service agreement that can allow time to provide services without having to change every year. And also we would put in there a cost adjustment mechanism or CPI as identified. In your packet, there is an attachment of SBWMA, this professional services agreement that they currently have with the City of San Carlos. Also, the number of transactions the City of San Carlos provides for SBWMA. Also within it is an exhibit A which kind of details the scope of services that SBWMA is looking for with the town, for financial services. So currently, San Carlos provides these services for approximately one hundred thirty-two thousand dollars and that's all financial services, banking, accounts receivable, investment services, A R, year-end financials, working with the financial auditor and so forth. So it's about a third to maybe a half workload of what the town provides in daily accounting services. And so in, in response, the town staff is evaluating, still evaluating the workload requirements with SBWMA for this financial services agreement. So what we would do is, is it would be established as a separate entity within our financial services, within our financial system. SBWMA would be brought over as an enterprise entity within us, within our, our town, within our financial software. And we would provide the financial services for them, which would include accounts payable, accounts receivable, general ledger reconciliations, balance sheet reconciliations, financial reporting in every, and for that matter, for SBWMA. So what are the contract, the town anticipates that possibly a part-time person will be needed just, just to solely provide those services for SBWMA. And part of that, part-time person will also be a pass-through to the SBWMA contract. So we would solicit, if we go forward with the proposal, there is a solicitation, solicitation of a half-time person dedicated for this contract. And then it would also be augmented with staff as myself and the accountant overseeing this person to do the A P, the A R, cash receipts for SBWMA and also reconciliation reporting to provide back to the SBWMA management every month so they can provide reporting to the authority. So currently, the town's anticipation is with this half-time person be about thirty-five to forty-five thousand for a part-time person, eighteen, twenty hours a week. And anticipation is also to probably cost out either thirteen to fifteen percent of Finance Department's total costs, which is about six hundred and forty-five thousand, towards this cost proposal. So it's looking between thirty-six and forty-five, thirty-five and forty-five thousand for a part-time person and probably eighty-two thousand to ninety-six thousand worth of cost of the Finance Department towards providing this service. So what we're asking is for council's authorization to provide a proposal to SBWMA. Within the proposal, we will write in there what our intention of, what we believe the services they're looking for. We would also put in there what we think as ramp-up costs and ramp-down costs if, if, per se, if something to get started, to get them started. We have to input them in our new financial system, which in April of this month, this year, we are going to, we're going to a new version of our financial software system. So it's going to take some time training. It'd be better providing better workload, financial workload appearance for SBWMA. So we want to include those costs in there. Also, we have Open Gov, which we think we, we could provide a greater synergy for SBWMA in providing them an additional reporting tool that they could use. So we would include that in the ramp-up and ramp-down costs. And then again, it's just a time of getting them started on our financial system. It's going to take some time between us and San Carlos if we were to get the proposal and, and win the contract. And also, we would just make sure that the current cost of our department could be augmented, meaning that this could be a revenue alternative to augment the Finance Department. So with that being said, I'd like to ask for if there's any questions, but this is a potential opportunity that the town can look to provide additional services. But again, it would require a half-time person.
Thank you, Robert. Shall we just go around? Would you like to ask Robert any questions?
Question, since we're still doing the workload analysis, but process-wise, would this be the last time we see this?
Yes, it would be the last time we see this. We're, we're going to have, work with Councilmember Widmer, who's part of the SBWA board to write a proposal to SBWMA regarding what we see is the requirements that they're looking for. And within their packet, there was kind of a, an outlay of what San Carlos charges as far as the, the requirements for the scope of services, which is right now is about a hundred thirty-two thousand that they, that they charge for accounts receivable, accounts payable, investment in banking, general ledger reporting, cash receipts. So in there, there was kind of a, a sample of what currently is being charged.
And are you asking us to approve in a range, which would be an upper limit or something? And it turned out it was more work than you thought even at the office. If you're still doing, if you're still scoping it at some level, there should be some control on that.
If we, if we're, if we scope it out and it turns out that we're going to end up having this, this is going to be a cost for the town? Or we're not going to submit a proposal? I wouldn't recommend submitting a proposal. So we wouldn't do so. But if it's a money generator for the town, then I would, I would suspect it would be a kind of a no-brainer to get revenue, even if it's twenty, thirty, forty thousand.
My question is, we're approving sort of a blanket approval either way. There's no check on it from here till we're submitted?
Correct.
Any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Karen?
One question. Robert, you mentioned we're going to have some software upgrades on our financial software. How does that differ to what San Carlos currently has?
I think, and just seeing some of the reports that San Carlos provides to, to SBWMA, I think Springbok is a definite big-time upgrade for SBWMA. And I think we could provide some good synergy for them in getting this cost, this service, professional service for them. One, we could better provide more professional reports, the same reports that the council gets, we could provide to them. One, it would be the check registers, the, our check register that we provide to the council is a lot better than what SBWMA is currently receiving from City of San Carlos. So I can see, I, one aspect is the reporting, they would get a better reporting, financial reports from us. And our upgrade to our software is also, is benefiting the town of Atherton. That's the reason we're doing it. But it would provide better opportunity for them as well. It's going to be a cloud-based software. So there's opportunity for SBWMA to have read-only access that currently, because they currently are close to City of San Carlos as far as offices, they need something they can go down and request it. For us, the cloud capability with our financial software, we can give them readability, you know, read-only ability on the software. Once we update and, and input the information, you know, the financial information in, in the software every month, we can say, okay, your reports are ready to, to print. And we would still provide them the reports, but if for some reason, you know, during the week or during the month that they want to see something, they can log on their own and, and read the reports.
And one additional follow-up to your question, this is just the request for proposal.
Right.
Just like, just like we receive a request for proposal, then if we receive bid, they negotiate with us for the final contract. The final contract comes before the city council.
And then as, as that comes back, George mentioned, we would, once we submit our proposal, if there's something that may be a change of scope or maybe they, they want additional stuff, that would be the negotiating item that we would continue with them.
So yeah, just a, a little bit of a background, you know, of course, you know, I've been on the board for a while and, and there is a, you know, a technical advisory board that George is the vice chair of. You know, the reports that the SBWMA and the financial support is kind of, whereas, you know, as is and, and the types of reports that they put before the board weren't as, anywhere as close as what we have. So, you know, I'd suggest it to the, the executive director that he compete this. And, you know, so he agreed to, to go do that. So I agree with where Robert, in the comments that Robert made, that I really feel with getting things set up and, and then allowing their financial person. So there's, you know, the City of San Carlos does some basic stuff and then they have a finance director, Marshall Moran, who actually is part of the SBWMA. And he takes that raw information and he puts together additional, additional work. So I think that based on what I've seen with our Open Gov, what I've seen, you know, from Springbok, that, that we, they'll be able to serve themselves for the most part. And there's a move afoot right now, really, with the SBWMA to actually pull them out of the City Hall area at San Carlos and put them over where the, the trash recycling is, which, because they own that building and so we don't want to have the extra expense. So I think it's a good opportunity for us to defray some costs, share some costs, but, you know, as, as George pointed out, if it doesn't make sense, then obviously we're not obligated to A, sign a contract or B, submit a bid. But it looked like that, you know, we do a lot better job from investment management to openness, to the budgeting and mid-year adjustments, we do a lot better job. Or even just the check registers, you know, when you look at the check registers, they come in the SBWMA packs. You can go online and see them. They're very difficult to read and you don't get any information out of them. So-
Printouts from a dot matrix printer.
Yeah, so, so I think it's a good opportunity for us and for Robert himself. You know, and as I said, you know, I spoke with George about it, they, you know, they kind of picked, picked my brain on it. But we don't have to, if it doesn't make sense, then we won't, we shouldn't be bidding. And if it's, if they try and squeeze ten pounds in a five-pound bag, then, then I would think that in the negotiations we would, you know, also not sign a contract. The three-year thing, besides what Robert said, they have a bid from the City of San Carlos and the City of San Carlos said that they wanted to up and they wanted to bond them for three years. So that's where they're trying to do an apples-to-apples.
The City of San Carlos said what?
They only wanted to do a three-year contract.
Only three years?
They only wanted to do a three-year contract. So I would say, you know, honestly from us, we could say, here's a three-year contract for apples-to-apples comparison, but we might want to have a one-year outage or, or something like that. Or, or, you know, with some words in the contract that says, you know, if it's not working out for either of us, we would have a determination for convenience or some way to unwind.
Right.
So I'll tell you, I'm all about trying to increase revenue for the town, you know, figure out how to bring more money into the town. But I, I have, I have a few really just kind of specific questions because I'm a little not confused, but just kind of uncertain as to why we would want to do this. So has SBWMA requested proposals for outsourcing this to all of the jurisdictions in San, San Mateo County?
Yes.
And what about for like outside accounting firms?
No, they, I think they've just done it internally.
That's correct.
The local governmental agencies. We, I mean, just like we have services from Redwood City for I T and for auto maintenance, it's, it's very common to share services amongst agencies.
So is San Carlos not going to bid? You, but I just heard you say they're doing-
Yeah, they've already got a bid. They've already got the number. They've already turned in the number and so they've told us what, what the services are and what the number is.
This one here?
Hundred and thirty-one thousand.
The number that's in the staff report, a hundred and thirty-some odd thousand dollars.
This is their proposal that they, that they submitted?
I think they're new-
Fifteen-year cost, yeah.
That, I think that's for the current year.
That's current.
Yeah, the fourteen-fifteen, but if, if there's an adjustment, it could be a C P I adjustment on what they're currently providing.
And so in reading your staff report about the hiring the half, a part-time person, maybe I misunderstood that the workload appears to be about a third to a half amount of what we are currently doing. So, and we're going to hire a half-time person to do that?
Yes, just to be focused.
That doesn't seem, I mean, that doesn't seem to-
Just the, the check processing.
Yeah.
Check processing.
Check processing, just for S, SBWMA, the process would, it's going to require some training, them to get, to understand our system, processing the check register, the checks. SBWMA, my conversations with them, some of their payments are through the bank, like they receive money from direct deposits from the bank, so for cash receipts. It's going to take someone to oversee that, making sure, okay, their processes, understanding their processes, their accounts payable. We won't issue any checks unless they're signed by SBWMA to release, to pay this invoice. So it's going to take somebody to be in conversation with them and be in communication. You know, this is the invoices to, to bill out every month. And again, big, one of the invoices are the A R portion would be recology, which they invoice for the fees, for the tipping fees. So we want someone that's dedicated to that, to that, that area.
But think of it this way, it's, it's one-half to one-third of what NOI does presently, is what that comparison is meant to say.
Well, so it's kind of misstated here a little bit.
The workload appears to be one-third to one-half the amount of checks, invoices, wires, E F Ts and billings.
Of, of one of our person, not of our-
But that's what, those, that's the work that NOI does.
Yeah. So what's the total amount of dollars that would flow through, you know?
It's a lot more than what we do.
Yeah, definitely. It, it, to do the work, it would definitely, we need that one person, that half-time person. We, we could decide a range between thirty-five and forty-five thousand. And then we would offset our cost of, of our overhead cost, you know, thirteen to fifteen percent, which is saying about eighty-two thousand.
She's asking what the, what the value of the enterprise fund is.
The value of, of what SBWMA is, it's forty-two million, forty-one million, yeah.
Forty-two million. We would be handling forty-two million dollars worth of, you know, funds in and out, being responsible for them, responsible for investments and things. And so what's our exposure? What's our liability? What's the risk?
Same as it is now.
I mean, we have an auditor, we'll have an auditor, same auditor?
Yeah.
That comes to and does our books.
It's not quite the same as it is now because we are, we're not processing forty-two million dollars of someone else's money. We're processing our money.
NOI's liability and all that sort of stuff is the same, the town's liability.
But the majority of the, the number of checks is substantially slower because they have two maids, major contractors. Recology is more than half of the business. S B R, which is the, the organization that hauls the, hauls the recyclables and operates the materials processing facility. And then they have a handful of contractors, you know, consultants, as well as dump sites, so to speak. So there's like five to eight of those. So yes, it's more money, but, but the-
Their vendors are less. They're, they're about eight vendors.
Correct, correct. And then the investment management, like Cut Water does for us, they're currently bidding that. They don't really do investment management. They put all their money in life. And so-
But the contract would be that we would manage that and recommend and handle that.
They asked us to bid that as, as an option.
So-
I'm sorry, so I, now you've raised the issue, I'm going to try and understand.
No, go, go right ahead.
Have we had, have we had a legal analysis to look at it to see what our potential exposure would be if all went wrong on this? I mean, is there a way we'd be sued for forty-two million dollars if we had some issue where, where we're out like that?
Yes.
I wouldn't think so. No, I, I think because we have, it, it's required that we do same insurance requirements, like carry a million dollars liability, it's all of that, yeah. And, and within the agreement, in the agreement, it, it does discuss, you know, about the whole harmless and stuff. But I, I think it's, it's one of the biggest things is they do seven hundred and forty-one number of checks issued. We do about three thousand within a year. A lot of it's E F T A, C H, it's stuff that's gone into their bank. Another synergy that we have is they use Wells Fargo, Wells Fargo's our bank. We do the investment, we would do cut, they would go with whatever we recommend, which we currently use Cut Water. They would just become an enterprise fund within us and they would be treated differently, separated. Everything we'd have, everything would be separated from our own financial system. So nothing will be coming over our money, we're not becoming over theirs. It's just a separate entity and we just do the financial, accounting services.
Would our current insurance cover if something went wrong and we ended up, we ended up being sued for negligent act or something else?
Yeah, I was just going to add, I mean, we don't see it as a, as a giant red flag. And we look at it, you know, normal, the insurance that we normally have, the same thing, just applied to a different thing. And the cost of that insurance would be built in and-
We just name them as a shirt.
You know, it's, it's like our fiduciary trust, our enterprise funds are, many communities have water districts, redevelopment agencies, that, that's the way it would operate for us.
So I just have a couple more questions, comments and stuff. Aside from the shared services benefits that, you know, you're talking about, that maybe a hundred thirty, a hundred twenty thousand dollars worth or something, what is the additional benefit? City manager indicated, you know, he'd do it for twenty thousand dollar profit. I think it's a huge amount of, you know, additional work for our staff and a dil, this, a disillusion of focus for us, from our staff for what we are focusing on because I see that we have the Civic Center project coming up, the drainage plan coming up, the bike pad coming up, the Marsh Road. I mean, it's, we have just so many projects on our plate. And why would we want to take on one additional body of work that's really not in our core focus of what we do? Because what we do is the business of the Town of Atherton. This is not the business of the Town of Atherton. And I don't know, San Carlos is a different body. They are there, you know, they've been sharing the same building, you know, with the, um, Royal Street there or whatever. And so I just, I have a, a hard time thinking that this is a good idea at this time for another reason. We're going to do the Springbok upgrade, right? And that in itself will take some retraining of our staff. And, and new software upgrades never go smoothly, never, ever, ever, never, no matter how, you know, you think it's going to go. And then to add this on top of it, the next month just seems like a perfect storm about to happen. And I just don't think we're going to do that. I had an opportunity to talk to the, our finance committee chair, Mr. Polito, about this. He called me and asked me about it. And he said that I should express his opinion about this, that he is very adamant that this is something that we should not take on at this time, that he just does not see any upside to it and that it's a huge potential distraction and that we should really just kind of stay the course with what we're doing. So that's, that's kind of my comments about it. I just don't think there's a huge upside to take on the additional work, even if there's not a big potential liability because of insurance and everything. I think that it will create too much work and a distraction from what our core business is. Does anybody else want to make a comment about this?
I disagree with your skepticism on the opportunity. And as I said, we didn't go into it willy-nilly, just saying, let's go do it. Both George and I have some pretty good insight into their operations and we don't think it's a risk.
Well, even based on that, you know, Councilmember Widmer, I see a perception of a conflict of interest because if you-
There's, there's no conflict of interest. He's going, planning on recusing himself from the vote at the SBWMA.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I think that I, I understand,
Both attorneys have talked about it already.
But I had a, a call from another council member in the region about it today and said, you know, it's my understanding that Councilmember Widmer, as the chair of the SBWMA board, has been pushing to have this done and, you know, brought it up and has been pushing. And I think the perception is worse than maybe the reality in the situation.
Well, this check with Baba Zon, who is the attorney up there, he's got absolutely no issues in spoken words.
Well, I just, again, a public perception sometimes does not have the benefit of, you know, the one-on-one conversation with the attorney.
Well, I appreciate you watching out for my reputation, but thank you.
It's not just your reputation, it's the Town of Atherton's reputation. So that's just kind of, I, I think it's something that we really should not go forward with. And I'm sorry that the mayor is not here to be able to weigh in on this. So any more comments?
Well, are we going to take a vote on it or what?
Well, I wanted to, you know, does anybody have any other comments?
I think that this, at this stage, it might be, I mean, I, it, if we move forward and we find out that it's just not financially feasible to the town, and you'll, you will know the numbers of what potentially the town, in fact, could make or not. And I think that that's, I mean, it's, it's a little early. I mean, maybe an opportunity, but we don't really know what the positive outcome could be for the town. Maybe at that time, we, it comes back to us or George informs us.
George says it doesn't come back to us.
The, it's just the R F P at this point.
The R F P, yeah.
The R F P doesn't come back, it's just a response from the town and they review it. And if we get selected, then there's a negotiation phase that occurs, just like every other R F P. And before a contract is awarded, we get all the final numbers. That does come back to the city council for a decision.
But you know, by that time you're really in a pretty deep.
Well, just like with any other bidder, you don't have to select them.
Yeah, but you know, you make your decision about whether to go out for a bid based on-
The transition, San Carlos would be terminated or ending their, their operations when, if we were to-
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, but there'd be an overlapping period.
So they would do, for like the- So they would do, for like the audit, they would handle the audit for the ending of this fiscal year. We would, my anticipation, we would pick up the audit for the fifteen, sixteen fiscal year, because they did the work for the fourteen, fifteen fiscal year. So our auditor wouldn't see this until next year, after the conclusion of the fifteen, sixteen fiscal year.
I just think you have so much.
So, you know, even though, you know, there, there is a degree of hesitation, I do like the fact that we've been pushing the envelope as far as open government and, and having the opportunity of pushing, you know, SBWMA into more, frankly, exposure to the public to say, hey, by the way, you, we're gonna, if we're doing their side of the accounting side, they're also gonna be required, because we're gonna push them to more transparency as well. So I think that that's kind of a plus-plus in, in that sense, is that, you know, if it was in our direction, we'd also be pushing them, because as a trash payer, I mean, you know, we all don't like our trash bills either, so this kind of pushes them out there and saying, hey, look, now you're gonna be more accountable, because the public is going to be seeing a little bit more. So I do like the fact that we've been pushing the envelope, and if by just sheer action, it moves them into that. As a taxpayer, I like that as well, so.
I don't see that correlation.
I'm sitting as a taxpayer too, can I see the correlation? If I have the ability to, you know, use a, a tool that they may never use.
You mean opened up?
Opened, yeah.
Oh, no, but that's, that's different. I mean, just by virtue of us doing their accounting, does not necessarily benefit you as a taxpayer. I mean, what it does.
As an Atherton resident, we're managing their books.
But.
And, and making some money.
And making some money, but you know, if I'm a taxpayer here locally, and I have a problem with my trash bill.
But we don't know that.
We manage their books.
Well, and I'd like to say that the two representatives have been, been on SBWMA, are pretty big advocates for the accountability of taxpayers, I would say.
True enough.
Exactly, yeah.
Trash is, trash is a stupid business.
Well, let's bring it to a vote then. So I'll call for the motion to recommend the request for a proposal.
I, I, so moved? I would like to recommend that we go ahead and move forward with submitting a, a response to the request for a proposal for consideration by the South Bay Waste Management to dig over their, uh, San Carlos's based financial account.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposed. So that motion passes, and we will then give it to staff to go forward with the request for a proposal. And then when will we see, we see it back at council?
If we are selected as the potential vendor, you will see the final agreement, then negotiated costs, what the benefit would be, and have the final authority whether we enter into it or not.
At that point, so the full council will see it at that time.
Well, we won't see the request for a proposal that goes out?
Well, you know me better than that, I'm gonna put it out to you as soon as I send it to the SBWMA, so you'll see.
No, I don't know that.
But you're not gonna see it as a form of volume.
I mean, we didn't see their request that came to you.
Yeah, yeah, I put that in our Friday email, along with the detail of the finances.
This last Friday?
Two Fridays ago, three Fridays ago, yeah.
Oh, two Fridays ago, I was in someplace else. All right.
Totally transparent.
Good. All right, so, okay, moving on. So, Robert, you're up next.
Yes.
You got breath?
Exactly. Before you is to adopt, adopt fee resolution to set fees for the adopted wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance. Over the past couple months, we discussed the creation of the wired, uh, W two F ordinance, and we proposed the ordinance on November fifth, study session, introduced the first ordinance on December seventeenth. On July twenty-first, we held the second reading and urgency ordinance adoption of the W two F ordinance. And the council was, it was discussed with council that we bring back the actual, the fees. So right here before you is the based on, on city attorney recommendation and review with staff. The suggested town process for wireless facility permits is established as a fee amount per application. So this would be a, a fee of two thousand five hundred dollars per permit, uh, per facility, and a planning review fee of two thousand five hundred dollars. And any additional cost for review of the W two F permit application will be at a specified hourly rate, so as in our master fee schedule. Also, what was discussed was the lease amounts, once this, the or- facility ordinance is issued, that there will be lease amounts that the staff would negotiate with the, the permit holder. And it was recommended by council that the base fee amount would be three thousand two hundred per month, per location. So that's just the base fee. Once that comes out, we'll, staff will negotiate the lease, bring it back to council, and council will negotiate what that lease fee would be, but the minimum would be thirty-two hundred dollars. So today, we're just a- asking council to adopt the fee resolution to, for the two thousand five hundred permit fee application for the W two F and the two thousand five hundred fee for the planning review for the wireless telecommunications facility. And other than that, that is staff report.
Okay, thank you very much. So any council members have any questions or comments about this?
So, as we discussed. Thank you.
Mike?
I have just a, my education probably question. Fiscal impact, none?
None. The only fiscal impact is possibility of having a, a lease payment fee. We currently cannot, don't have a lease, a fee payment for public right-ofway. So there's several W two, itenas, facilities on public right-ofway, which we are not currently receiving a lease from. We will, going forward, this ordinance allows us to charge a lease on top of these facilities. So we would get minimum thirty-two hundred dollars per month on a lease.
Maybe a positive fiscal impact.
The fiscal, fiscal impact of you adopting the resolution?
Of this is not one of those.
Nothing, right.
And if I may add a little asterisk to that, the constitution says that in terms of a fee, it has to bear a reasonable relationship to the staff time actually expended in providing that service. So in that terms, the, the permit fee, we shouldn't see any income from that, I mean, if, if we do it not right.
Right, because it's staff time.
However, the lease itself would generate revenue, that's good.
Thank you.
Any public, no. So I'll call for a motion to adopt the resolution. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? That passage unanimously. And so, gosh, based on that, call for a motion to adjourn?